I've arrived, and that's important because we can't reconvene without Councilmember Lane here, who is going to continue his report out on the general government link. So I'll happily yield the chair to Councilmember Lane.
Thank you Vice Mayor. We're picking up at the Mayor's Office recommendations. This is a continuation of our meeting earlier this afternoon. I've been demoted to...
You're welcome.
Could you put up graphic page number 60, please, Mr. Seymour? Essentially, we've accepted the Mayor's proposed budget for the Mayor's Office, and I thought we would put the budget summary up so that... Could you sort of zoom in on the numbers, too, please? I think the... Well, this may be zooming in a little bit too close. Can you get the right column showing up on there? Yeah, there you go. That's very good. Okay, I think essentially the point here is the Mayor has reduced his budget for the total expenditures by $155,160. And reviewing that, we felt that he'd cut about as much as possible out of his budget. The only recommendation we made is that the line items details on professional services maybe should be tweaked to be more specific about what those costs are related to, and we discussed that with the Chief of Staff, and she has agreed to make those changes. Under the senior advisor recommendations, and if you'll put that sheet up now, Mr. Seymour, you'll also note that... Oh, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time following this because some of them have budget pages with them and some of them don't, and it just says "Accept Mayor's Proposed Budget." Could you give the number of what the Mayor's proposed budget...
That's just what we put on the screen. That was the Mayor's proposed budget. Could you put that back up again, please, Mr. Seymour? It's page number 60. If I have that page right.
Yeah, I realize that, but some of them don't have a budget page with them, so...
I know, but we...
This one does. Thank you.
We put that up on the screen. You want to put it back up again, or...
I looked at it, but if...
Okay, all right. Okay, the... Yes, ma'am.
Now, this says dues for Kentucky League of Cities are not included, and when you covered the council office, you recommended switching the National League of Cities dues to the Mayor's Office. So can you talk a little bit about that?
All right. Yeah, it's my understanding, and here again, we could get Budget to confirm this, that the Kentucky League of City charges have already been switched over to the Mayor's Office. But you make a good point, Councilmember Gordon. We failed to mention that on this sheet. We did refer to it in the earlier document. This has been switched over to the Mayor's Office, so that would actually be an increase in his budget.
So this does not include Kentucky League of Cities, according to the bullet points here, the dues?
Okay, it's my understanding that the Kentucky League of Cities was taken out of the council budget, put in the Mayor's Budget, but the National League of Cities is what we're transferring over there.
So are we going to be a member of Kentucky League of Cities, and where is that funding?
Well, it's supposed to be in the Mayor's Budget, and I mean, that's, I guess, a decision that has to be made. I think we are currently a member, but there are some issues pending before that. I don't know how to address that.
Do we know how much would need to be put in in order to include that in the budget?
Well, the amount was deducted from our council budget, and that was supposed to be about half of the fee.
Okay, so the National League of Cities money is really Kentucky League of Cities?
No, no. What I'm saying...
I'm sorry.
Previously, half of the Kentucky League of Cities budget was in the council office, and half was in the Mayor's Office. As I understand it, all of the Kentucky League of City money is now in the Mayor's Office. We are recommending that the National League of City budget also go to the Mayor's Office. And as one other organization, both those fees would go in there. I see the CAO is here, or the SAM. If you could address that, please, sir, I'd appreciate it.
I was just going to address the amount. It's $26,000, I believe, is what the annual dues are, and it's on a per capita basis. So in the past, it's been split, apparently for some time. I'm not sure how far going back. That change was made, but was half of it paid by council and half by the Mayor's Office, 13 each. And so the link recommendation was to consolidate that back in the Mayor's Budget. The $13,000 was not included in the Mayor's Budget, and I think that was going to be a potential late item. We're still debating whether or not to include that or not.
Okay, so it is not in here?
It is not in there. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that's... Total is 26,000?
Yes, ma'am.
And so this National League of Cities dues that Councilmember Lane mentioned in the beginning, transferring from the council to the Mayor's Budget, does the Mayor's Budget have any National League of Cities dues in it?
I'm not familiar with that, and Shay is not with us today. I don't recall that being a budget item, but if it was in our proposed budget, then I'm sure that's probably true.
I don't know if it was or not. We're giving... The council apparently is going to transfer their part to the Mayor's Office, so it would be good to know where all of that is.
Jerry, can you help me out here?
I can, I think. If you look at the... On page 31 of the budget, I'll try to reconcile some numbers for you.
Yes, sir.
If you look under dues near the bottom, for 2010, the original budget, and we're looking at account 77801. In 2010, we had $29,550. And what that consisted of was $13,000 for KLC, $7,200 for NLC, and $5,550 for ICMA. And then there was a balance around $3,000 or $4,000 that Rebecca had billed into for potential increases, okay? So if you go over to the Mayor's Proposed Budget, the first column of 2011, you see So $13,000 was taken out, and that was the KLC dues. Okay, so that was already taken out of council's budget. Now, apparently, it seems that that's not in the Mayor's Budget. They just took it out of council's budget. So what's remaining would be the NLC of $7,200, and then the $5,550 for ICMA. And also, it was discussed that the ICMA dues would eventually go to General Services since they're coordinating the whole ICMA activities. So the council link's recommendation here would be to transfer NLC dues to the Mayor's Office, and to transfer the $5,550 to General Services, and then there would be a $3,000, $4,000 balance in the... Remaining in council office.
And so we don't really think there's KLC dues in there?
The KLC dues of $7,200 is in the $16,550.
Now, you said $7,200. That's NLC, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, NLC. There's no KLC dues for 2011.
Okay, so are we... We don't know, then, if we're... Are we thinking we're not going to be a member of Kentucky League of Cities? Has that decision been made?
I'm not sure, I mean, whether that decision's been made. I do know at one point, that payment was held up. And I remember a discussion one time, and Councilmember Stinnott thought that we had to be in... Had to pay those dues because that was to get some of the benefits or to... Because they covered us, our insurance and things. But I think we found out subsequent to that, that there are other services that KLC provides, and I think someone on the Mayor's staff was going to give us a breakdown of what those services were.
Okay, thank you. And so, Joe, you'll let us know if you're going to bring that as a late item, or what the status is? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. That was some good catch. Appreciate your help on that.
Councilmember Lane, if I could respond to that specifically from our link discussion, Chief of Staff did represent to us that there would be a reevaluation of... I think there was an intention to not be a member, but because of some change of leadership at KLC, they were going to reconsider that. So I don't think they had planned to put that... Keep that in the budget, but some changes have occurred that they were going to consider it, and I would presume with that comment that it would be a late item that would come from the administration if they decided to do that. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Laws.
Sorry, just very quickly, the money that we transfer to either General Fund or the Mayor's Budget, is that helping make up our budget reduction we were asked to make?
Well, I mean, technically, that reduces our budget, but we're shifting it over to another department, so it's not really saving the government any money. But that was more of a decision that... That would be a decision more appropriate for the Mayor's Office to make, and for the council office to make, whether we should be members of these organizations.
Well, it's giving up money, and so we can...
Well, I understand that, but we're taking money out of our budget and putting it in somebody else's budget. We're not cutting any budget for the government. We're just shifting it from one area to another. But the decision of, I believe, of the links was that this was a better decision made, maybe in the Mayor's Office.
Okay, we can discuss it at the Cal meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Feigl.
Thank you. I think as we begin to evaluate whether or not we are going to fund dues to these organizations, it would be helpful to me if we could get some kind of a report on what kinds of benefits or services that we subscribe to through these organizations, because I certainly, you know, wouldn't want us to give up some service or, you know, our benefits unknowingly. So I would like to know exactly what do we... What do we get for that dues amount? What kind of services are we provided, and what kind of, you know, benefits do we subscribe to? And I don't know who would provide that, but I think that would be real helpful.
Okay. I think Mr. Kelly said he would get us something out on that. Maybe a memorandum would be helpful. All right. Okay, that's all I have on that particular item. And now, we're speaking of the senior advisor to the Mayor. If you could put up sheet 68, please, Mr. Seymour. And, you know, here again, there's... The only increase here is $366, which I presume is some additional cost for additional health insurance or something. I'm not sure what that's for, but essentially, that budget's remained static from last year, and we recommended approval of the Mayor's Proposed Budget. And we can go to sheet number 6, please. All right, this is the internal audit, and the summary, this was a recommendation to take approximately $14,000 from line item 71202, and approximately... Let's see. Scott, is that... That's the number that's incorrect on there, and needs to be adjusted here. Hold on a second. Essentially, we would be reducing that first line item by $14,000, and the other line item would be reduced by $12,000 instead of... Yes, that's correct. By $12,000, which will leave a net of $18,000 in that account. The total reduction would be $26,053. And that amount, $25,000, was recommended to go into the Citizens Advocate Office, and $1,000 was to go into the County Clerk's account for additional phone line expenses. I think it might be helpful if we could put up the internal audit, some budget summary, if you might. Page number 67. If y'all are following in your budget, that's page 67. Okay. So you can see that actually that budget had already been dropped by $81,000. I noticed Mr. Shalley has just come in, so perhaps you could explain the original deduction and then the additional $26,000 deduction that's being proposed by the Links Committee, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry, Councilmember. I was coming down here. Are you talking about the personnel expenditure item, or...
Right. Can you see the budget up?
Yes.
Okay, you can see where the operating expenses have been reduced by $105,000. That was actually in your budget, and then...
Yes.
The Links Committee is suggesting that we reduce that by another $26,000 approximately, so that... So your total budget cut would be an additional $26,000.
Okay. I believe it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that additional cut would probably come out of one of the professional services accounts.
Yes, sir.
That professional services account, the purpose for that would be to fund a limited information technology audit that would be RFP'd for an outsourced IT certified information system auditor, come in and examine the PeopleSoft program. I think I had about $45,000 left in there after we went through a series of cuts to get to the Mayor's Proposed Budget. Even at $45,000, you're going to get a pretty limited amount of IT audit services, and I can't give you an exact number as to the dollar cost of what an IT audit would involve, but to tell you that a full-scale IT audit is a six-figure project. To have $45,000 worth of an IT audit, you can get some limited assurances. We might be able to get some penetration testing, things of that nature, to test the system. If you take an additional $25,000 off of there, I would hesitate to think that we would be able to get much of anything in the way of an IT audit service that would provide any real benefit to the Urban County Government. So I would encourage the council to leave those funds in there, and the only way to have an actual figure and have an actual idea of what kind of specific service you can get for $45,000, you first have to do the RFP, and then outside services come to you and say, well, we can give you X or Y dollars, and so then there's some negotiation involved there. But I think if you reduce it down to... From $45,000 to something along the lines of $20,000, it really negates any realistic possibility of any kind of an IT audit for fiscal year 2011.
For the benefit of the people that are watching on TV, could you explain exactly what an IT audit is, the scope of that work, and everything?
Well, an IT audit is an audit of your information technology system. That scope can be very broad, depending on, first of all, how much funds you have to spend on it, or it can be narrowed down to a much more specific area. When you go into your RFP process, then you would have to negotiate with those third-party IT auditors as to what they could give you for the amount of money you have. So you might start out wanting Project A, but by the time you look at the costs and they say, here's what we can give you, you wind up looking at something else within the system. But typically, what it really involves is looking at your information technology hardware and software, looking for problems with access to the system, either by outside parties or individuals within the government who maybe shouldn't have the access. They can look at their infrastructure of your IT system. They can look for weaknesses in your programming structure. It's a very broad... And I'm not trying to be vague. I'm not an IT auditor, so I'm trying to be as specific as I can. But it's a very specialized area that specifically addresses auditing in the information technology system for weaknesses or limitations within its own internal control structure, if that helps.
Councilmember Crosby.
I don't have a question for Mr. Salley. My comments revolve mostly around during the budget process and more so into the function of this office, and also the funding of this office overall. And I will preface my comments by saying that many of you all know I've been doing research, looking into risk management, which I believe... And I guess you could say restructuring. It's been called many different things, and I know that that report out is coming later, so I'll try to save a lot of my comments regarding that. However, in researching this issue, it was brought to my attention, and I was looking into internal audit, because to give a little background history, there were two fraud assessments filled out by an employee in risk management, which has been identified to everybody on this council now. And during my research on this, I found that one of the questionnaires had come from the external auditors and went to risk management, or excuse me, to an internal audit in 2009. Based on their recommendations, they did not see that it needed to be investigated any further. So I started looking into the role of internal audit, because I found in one of the memos from internal audit to this individual that it had gone to not only internal audit, but the internal audit board. So I've asked a couple of members on the internal audit board if they were aware of this investigation, and they were none. I know we have council members on here, and I did not talk to both of them, but I did talk to one of them, and also a few other people. So that brought me to the point where I was starting to look into the internal audit division as well as the board. And my first disturbing thing that comes in is the fact that by ordinance, they are supposed to have bylaws. It clearly states it in the ordinance. When I sent Mr. Salley an email requesting a copy of the bylaws, he responded back that they do not have bylaws. So that is a violation of our ordinance, first and foremost. Second, they respond... They have said in the past, and they have given documents to other council members regarding a charter they have. A charter is not in the ordinance stating that that's what they should go by. It is bylaws. That is to be approved by the council. We have not approved any bylaws for them to be operating under. I also have serious concerns that this charter that they might be using, that are not their bylaws, may actually conflict with our ethics ordinance. Those are some things that I have just found through my research, so I'm hoping that we will be able to look into this a little bit more. Again, I said through the risk management fraud assessment questionnaires. Many of y'all have seen the back-and-forth emails regarding that. The 2008 one didn't even go to internal audit. It went to the Director of Finance, or excuse me, the Commissioner of Finance at that time, and it just stopped. And I believe that when a member of our government wants to report some kind of fraud, even if it's not appropriate for the external auditors, it was never... It went to the person they report to and was never given to even our internal audit board, which in turn may be operating under... Or not... They're not operating under what we have approved in ordinance because they have no bylaws. Furthermore, when I requested the documents, I was told by the internal auditor that an elected official could not receive those documents. Then our law department went out and got an outside attorney's opinion, which referred to us as a third party. I'm not a lawyer. There's a lot of ramifications to this, but I do believe that this is an issue that we all need to look into, particularly during the budget process, because not only are we looking at getting rid of certain positions and people in those positions who reported fraud to this government, we can't even see what they reported to make any assessment as it comes through the budget process. I would like for you all to pay special attention to, just when we're discussing these things, if you look at what it says in our own budget book, "The Office of Internal Audit evaluates whether the urban county government's procedures of risk management, internal control, governance..." whether the Urban County Government's procedures of risk management, internal control, governance as designed and represented by management are adequate and functioning in a matter to ensure risks are appropriately identified and managed," and it goes on and on. The person who reported these problems to what they thought was an appropriate external individual to be investigated was our own risk management director. Our own risk management director, the person who is supposed to be identifying risk. Our internal audit board knew, our internal auditor knew that there had been some sort of fraud and never interviewed this individual. Never. Never talked to this individual and determined because an outside, external auditor, financial auditor, didn't see any type of issues with it, that it didn't need to be investigated further. Folks, I think we've got an issue that we need to take up during our risk management link as well as our internal audit link. Thank you. I just was told that I wasn't allowed to do that, but it is part because I'm questioning the function and the funding of this division. Thank you, Councilmember Martin.
Well, my concern is that this kind of matter would be certainly appropriate in closed session, but these are really very serious allegations, and I'm not sure they're appropriate for a public televised venue. So, thank you.
Well, I would disagree because, to be transparent with what's going on, I think it's very appropriate during the budgeting process to be discussing these items. There was already a public memo sent with these individuals' names on it, so there's not a breach of any confidentiality there. Thank you.
Councilmember Lawless.
Yes, thank you. And I too have some very serious concerns for some other reasons, but to reduce the professional services to, from 30,000 or 44,553 to 30,500, and to have our internal auditor and audit board be the ones that hire a consultant to see whether or not our software is working adequately and appropriately, seems very backwards to me that that should be something that is done by somebody who is independent of this government and of, you know, the council and the administration. It needs to be an external audit. If we're going to spend that kind of money testing our different modules on our computer systems to make sure that they're working well, and I'm not saying they are or they aren't, I'm just saying that should be done by an expert who is external and not connected in any way to the government. Thank you.
I think that's what this line item is for. So you're essentially saying you support not taking the money out and leaving the money in the line item.
I say I support taking the money out and using it to hire an independent contractor, consultant to do that audit of our computer modules.
Well, I believe that's what that budget is for. Could you speak to that?
That is correct. And to your point, Councilmember, as the Director of Internal Audit, I'm a certified internal auditor, and according to my own professional standards, that would be one of the projects that I would oversee. So we would, of course, go out and get an independent IT auditor to examine the systems, but the RFP would come out of my office. I would coordinate with them and try to assist them in determining the areas that might want to be looked at. And then they would issue that report. That report would go to the whole council. It wouldn't just go to me. But it would be normally a function of the internal audit division to initiate that kind of outsourced audit.
Mr. Blues.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. I think that the narrow issue here is, with reference to line item 71202, and in fact, 71299, is that the Links Committee felt that the funding in those lines was, and is, small numbers inadequate to, you know, to address the issues that they are meant for. We did discuss in the link the possibility of eliminating them entirely since, as Mr. Salley himself suggested with reference to the IT audit, a serious and thorough audit would cost, you know, many times that, you know, that amount. What was it, $100,000 to $200,000? So we felt justified in shifting, taking the money from those two lines in order to defund the citizens' advocate position for the first six months of the, or the second six months of the fiscal 11. So that was our narrow focus. I think that if there were going to be other motions on what to do with these funds, it would be appropriate for them to be brought forward at the committee of the whole meeting. What we're doing here is trying to get a report out. Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Thank you. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Councilmember Lane. Mr. Salley, I was not calling you Bruce Salley. Can you speak to the importance of that audit? I know everybody's saying the money there's been diminished each year. We're getting to the point now where there's not enough to do anything of maybe large value. If we diminish it anymore, there's nothing there, there's not enough to do anything of value. But that to me is not the issue. The issue is the audit. And we put the money in the budget the first time to have that audit completed, and I think that we see some value in getting that audit completed. So can you speak to how important that audit is for this government? And we'll go from there.
Well, there's really never been an IT audit in a PeopleSoft system. And we've now been using PeopleSoft system for about, I guess, about two and a half years. And it really, we had, in the past, we've had funding in the budget to do this audit previously, but because of budget situations, it was recognized that those funds were needed for other general government purposes. And if you, I think if you had the line items that showed what we had asked for last year, it would show that we asked for 150,000 last year, and we didn't receive those funds. But then because of our budget situation, it was determined that it was prudent not to go ahead and spend that money at that time because there was greater need for that money in other government functions. You really need at some point to have someone come in who is an expert on information technology systems to look at your system, look underneath the hood at all different types of aspects of how that system works. You've got the infrastructure, how it was initially set up. You've got approval controls. You've got backend access controls. You've got penetration concerns. Can someone break into the system and actually get in and alter data without people being aware of it? And I'm not aware of anything of such a nature that exists at all. But the thing is, in order to really get some assurance that those weaknesses or limitations don't exist, you need to bring in someone who's an expert in information technology audit and also in PeopleSoft. So it's even more specialized than just saying, go out and get an IT auditor. They really have to be acquainted with your particular type of system and the type of databases that it relies, that it resides on. So the only thing that I guess I could say to the council is, we've wanted in the past to do this, and it definitely was a very good idea to do it, but it just simply wasn't the good time financially to do it. And even at 45,000, true, Councilmember Blues, it's not going to give you everything you want. But I think it's past time to begin having an examination of the IT system by an outsourced auditor who has a specific expertise to do that. And we will only get part of what we would probably want if we had full funding, but I think it's a lot better than nothing at all. And I hope that answers your question as directly as I can, sir.
It did. When you got to the part that said it's time that we get started on this, that's what I wanted to hear. So the 150,000 that we originally budgeted, is that the number you're saying wouldn't get at the whole thing?
Now, that probably would have taken us to just about anything that we really needed to have examined. But we never RFP'd that because of the other funding situations that the whole government had. So what I'm saying is, now you're looking at funding about a little less than one, about one-third that amount. So you're not going to get the comprehensive, full-scale IT audit that you would get with 150,000. But that said, I do believe that it is very important that we begin that process of IT audits. All of our financial records and now our payroll and HR records reside in this system. And I think it's important that we begin to have the controls of that examined by those types of experts to make sure that it is as robust as we want it to be in terms of its internal control and limited access and things of that nature.
We spent, what, about $15 million on this system?
I don't know the exact price, sir.
I'm getting a nod from the Commissioner of Defense that's about what we spent on the system. I guess I would move, if we're going to make a motion on this, if there's, is there a motion on the floor? Okay. They're just reporting out right now. I guess what I'm going to say is that when this is reported out as a motion, I would move that we go the opposite direction and add money back in here and get this audit started rather than depleting this fund to the point of no return. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin.
I guess my initial question was a follow-up to Councilmember Crosby's, but given that it's probably not budget nature, I guess I'm going to give the mic back to the Link Chair. But I think we need to follow up on this at some point, particularly to find out whether you, as the internal auditor, think there's a problem with our whistleblower policy and whether or not you believe the audit board is sufficient to handle these types of claims and whether it is independent from this council and the mayor's office. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember James.
Thank you, Councilmember Lane. I wanted, as you know, I was on the link for this, and I did, I either made the motion or supported the motion to pull the money from internal audit to put towards the other things that we needed to add them to. For one reason, I did that is because I guess there was an assumption or a practice that we, within the Links, find the money for which if we're adding or expanding a program or trying to fill in, we try to find that within our own link. I don't think that's necessary. But in this case, and I haven't always offered that, but in this case, in response to Councilmember Myers, I think what, we ask a lot of questions about what are we going to be able to do with the amount of money that we have that is line item or proposed for this particular audit? And I never got clarity that we'd be able to do anything of any substantial result with the limited amount of money. It was presented as if they needed $150,000 in order to complete something. So if there was a substantial module or component that could be shown that would be fulfilled from an amount of money that we had available, I will support that. But during our Links process, that was not clear. So it's almost like if you had a block of a street that you needed to pave, and the whole block was going to be $200,000, and you had $20,000, but you said, I'm going to leave this money in there just in case something comes up later. It doesn't really work that way. It kind of works that you have to complete, you aim to do something that completes a process, not just something that will end up sitting there and then potentially not having additional funding. If there was some kind of way that we'd have other money, I would support retaining the money in there potentially. But I'd have to hear where the rest of the money is coming from and what modules or something that would be complete towards getting there. But just because the sake of, you don't want to take something away because we want to try to keep what we have, that just doesn't work during a budget season. So that's, just want to explain to you, Councilmember Myers, that that was what my perspective was on it. Because you know that I support audits. You know that I'm for that, but I couldn't do it based on 10% of the money being there or whatever the amount was. Thanks. Thanks.
Councilmember Beard.
Thank you, Duane. I guess, in my opinion, the 45K will get you zero as far as a comprehensive audit of the systems. And I favor doing it. I favor doing an audit, and I favor doing an audit right. In all probability, you won't find anybody in Lexington, Kentucky who's qualified to do an audit of a system this complex. And I'd be surprised even if 150,000 would do it, to tell you the truth. When you're talking about travel and housing and things of that sort, if you're bringing people in from elsewhere. It's kind of a knotty problem here that we've got, but it's pouring $45,000 down the drain. Somebody could hardly give it a lick and a promise for $45,000 who would be qualified. And I just don't believe you're going to find anybody in Lexington that would be qualified to touch it. I don't know where Rama is, but...
The only point I would make, sir, also with regard to Councilmember James' comments, audit scope can be narrow or it can be broad. It depends on, I think you would get more than a lick and a promise. But again, without an RFP, I can't tell you specifically what you would get. But you can narrow your scope in any type of audit, whether it be financial, operational, or IT-related. But to your point about finding someone, it could be a challenge. I know there are some accounting firms in town that may be able to provide that service. I wouldn't speak to say that they absolutely could. But, you know, I do think that one of the charges for internal audit is to try to assess the risk to the organization. And I think that when you have a new, very expansive, comprehensive financial system and HR system that has not gone through any kind of an outside audit, that that represents a substantial risk, just on the base of that statement alone. So I think it is my responsibility as an internal auditor to tell you as a council that that represents a risk to the organization. I am not representing that I think there is any particular problem with the system. What I am saying is, someone needs to look under the hood to really evaluate how robust its controls and infrastructure is, just by the very nature of how much we rely upon it. So your point is well-made, that 45,000 is not going to get us a lot. But again, there is a risk there, and how that wants to be addressed by the council with funding is something that you, as the council, will have to decide.
Well, I guess my point is, if we've got $15 million invested in this process, that $150,000 or $200,000 is a drop in the bucket compared to a $45,000 effort. The national in scope CPA firms are going to go outside of Lexington to bring an expert in here. And again, those costs will go up. I've been there, done that, and I understand how that works. This is a very, very complex system, and we're not through yet. And they really need to peel the onion back and get down to what this is all about. This has not been a very easy process. And when you have no easy processes, there could be errors, not on purpose, but there could just, could be some things that could be suggested that we would get for our money. So, and Rama, I, you know, it's your system, so maybe you'd like to put your oar in and...
Well, I welcome the audit. I think we go to a great extent to talk about controls and, you know, make sure, you know, the same person who's receiving the money is the one giving. All those things are factored in. But at the end of the day, I agree. I mean, what you could do is, you could look at the whole system and say, what in there poses the biggest risk? And take that and audit that if you want. And I presume, Bruce, you're talking about the PeopleSoft system, not the entire IT, because we have 92 applications, and I'm sure 150,000 is not going to cover all of that.
I don't think it will do that.
So if you get it down to the PeopleSoft system, then we got HR, budget, and finance. So what do we... So, what do we look at in there? What poses the biggest risk? I think that approach with some prioritization might help you get through at least the first step of it in terms of what are you going to audit? And the complexity of this system, I mean, it's very complex. There are only two tier-one systems. One is SAP, and then PeopleSoft, so we're doing it. So, you're going to probably, as you said, go out and find somebody who has that skill level. You're looking at national providers at that point.
Exactly. I would hope that it would be complex, to tell you the truth, for $15 million.
Yeah, it is pretty complex.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. I guess I was going to have Rama come back up. And you were speaking to kind of splitting out the audit. Can you possibly work with Mr. Sally and come up with an idea on what that might look like, what we might go after in a focused audit? And, you know, to Councilmember James and Beard's point, that's why I made the motion, made the statement that rather than just leaving this money in, I want to make a motion to go a step further than that and add more money back in so that we get enough money to take a bite of the apple and do a segmented audit. So, if you guys could work together to see what that might look like and...
Sure. There is an executive steering committee for PeopleSoft, and if I could get their help, that would be, we can work it out. So, it would be more than just the two of us.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. James.
Thank you. I was going to ask Rama a question regarding the same thing. Rama, as there, obviously, the administration put together this budget. Was there discussion about funding for this and how, whether it would be helpful or not helpful to the government? I mean, I'm trying to figure out the administration's perspective on this audit, and what level of priority does it have for the administration?
I mean, I didn't have any discussions with Mr. Sally about it, but the discussions initially, I remember, two years ago when we funded it, was to see how much of the implementation we can get done in terms of all the modules, and then take a look at it at the end of it to see what is it going to take to audit this.
Okay.
And I believe we did discuss that, but in terms of, and the number was going to be pretty high, and we knew that at that point, that it was going to be in the six-figure range.
Okay. Well, let me ask Mr. Sally, then. During, during discussions and preparation for the mayor's proposed budget, did you have conversation with Commissioner, or the mayor, or anybody, and talk about the importance of this and what that would mean to the government's business?
I spoke to the internal board about it, the internal audit board about it. As I've said, this is something that we have had in our budget for two or three years. It has been fully funded in the past. I think the fact it was fully funded in the past speaks to the administration's overall value that they placed upon it. $150,000, as I said, that was put in the budget for last year. So, the situation we simply have this year is the funding problem. And what do we do with that, and how much of an IT audit do we want to try to obtain with the amount of limited funding we have? But again, you know, if you look at a budget as a, as a policy document, my opinion, I think it shows that the administration has been very much in favor of having the system audited because of the mayor's proposed budget in the past did put the full amount of funding in there I asked for.
But what happened this year? Was it, you think it was only the economic situation? I mean, did they have discussion about from other places that they could pull money in order to fund this?
Well, each division had to come up with, with a way to help to balance the budget. And, you know, I certainly wasn't going to sacrifice personnel.
Right.
And so, the only other area where I had substantial funds was in the IT audit area.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. I think I'll be the last speaker on this issue, and I'd just like to say I'm on the internal audit board. I was a minority vote on this link committee because I would not favor taking the money out. And when you consider that we're spending about a half a billion dollars a year through our accounting system, you know, I feel that it's prudent to spend $150,000 to make sure the system is running as good as possible. And so, I would, so I'd go along with Councilmember Myers, say that we should try to provide additional funding if there's some way we could do it. Having said that, you know, our budget is extremely tight, and so there are some areas like public safety and social services maybe would come ahead for the audit, but I would put this high on the list. Okay. May we go forward to the county attorney recommendations, please? And we are recommending acceptance of the mayor's proposed budget. And Mr. Seymour, if you could put up page 64 real quickly. This has a, just a small increase in the operating expenses for that office, and we are recommending approval. Okay. Could we go to page number seven, please? County clerk, probably, the good news is a lot of these things should meet pretty quickly. The county clerk's budget, we are recommending approval of it, and there was an increase of about $1,000 for landline expenses. And I don't know if we want to, we don't need to put the county clerk's budget up, I don't think. Commonwealth attorney, and we also recommended approval of that budget. And that actually, do you have that, do you have the number for that, Mr. Seymour? I guess we don't have that budget summary, do we?
Sir, it is a late addition, as you might recall.
Okay. All right. Okay. We, I guess we should go to the law department, which is page 83. Right. It's 83 and 84, I guess. And in that particular case, that is a reduction in expenses, and according to the Commissioner, the plan there is to take, there are two authorized but unfunded positions, and their intention would be to reevaluate their staffing needs and maybe come back next fiscal year with the change in staffing requirements. So, that was recommended for approval. The special projects, that's page 61. And essentially, the big item there was the Kentucky Christmas chorus. And according to the information provided, that the cost of providing that has gone up because the, I think there's a union issue regarding the musicians playing. And then, secondly, the amount of attendance have been decreasing over the last few years. So, I suggested that perhaps we could seek corporate underwriters and maybe advertisers, and we could broadcast that on a local TV station, do some type of approach like that so that we could perhaps carry that project onward. The Links Committee recommended approval of the special projects and events budget Do we have a question? Mr. Martin.
Is there anybody with the administration here who can talk on this event, I guess? Penny would be about the only person that knows about it. I guess my, Joe, is this anything you can, you know about? I just, Councilmember Lane, I know, Joe, you know how many years this has been going on?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't give you the history of it. Several years, of course, but I'm not sure. I think it's just a matter of hard decisions relative to trying to get to the, to the budget number that, that we are trying to get to.
Do we know what the television audience is? Because although it's Rep. Arena, obviously, it's not UK basketball and doesn't have the draw of John Wall, but it does have a, it is televised live on Channel 27, then I think re-televized. And so, knowing that it already has corporate sponsors, I think the Kentucky Utilities, I recall, was, was one of the sponsors last year. I guess I'm skeptical about whether additional sponsors would be able to generate $30,000 to, to cover that. My guess is that some of the existing sponsors are already covering as much as probably would exist. It just seems like a Lexington tradition, and I hate to, and in fairness, I, you know, I sang in it last year for the first year, but, and, you know, it's, I watched it on TV many, many times, and I just would hate to see this Lexington tradition go by the wayside.
Well, I don't believe the intention is not to have the Christmas chorus. I believe the intention is to reduce the funding to zero because there's a feeling that we'd be able to do it without funding from the government.
Well, we, we eliminate many things by reducing the funding to zero, but...
But what I'm trying to say is the idea is not to not have the event, but to reformat it and provide outside funding for it. But I'm not, there's no one here to speak to that, so if we can address that at our next meeting. Because we're not going to vote on everything today.
Right.
We're just going to review it. So, why don't we make a note to have, I think Penny Ebel would be the one that would just address that.
Perhaps we could also get the, maybe the University of Kentucky Orchestra to play or something like that. Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Okay. We have computer services recommendations, and that, we are recommending approval of that. Trying to find the sheet on that. Why don't we go to the Office of the Chief Information Officer for the budget summary up there, if we could put that up? Rama, could you come up? And perhaps I'll let you answer a couple of questions on this to... Okay. Mr., oh. Mr. Martin, do you have a question on this, or is that old? Ms. Lawless.
Councilwoman Martin. Councilwoman Martin. Okay.
Do you have, go ahead, Ms. Lawless.
I'm really excited to see the arts program remaining the same, and I applaud you. There's one mistake on here. It says, "Adopted budget FYI 10, Summer Fest, zero."
That was, explained to us, that's been renamed. If you look at the line item underneath it, they just switched from, to give it appropriate naming on there. You see the difference there?
Oh, okay. Because it was funded for $10,000.
Right. I understand, but they renamed the event on the budget.
Okay. No worries. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Rama, could you just explain what your budget's doing up there, please?
Sure. The, primarily, you have three divisions that you're looking at. Division of Enterprise Solutions, which wasn't part of the budget last year. So, you're seeing that as a new division under the Office of CIO. Computer Services and Government Communications have remained there. The gist of the budget is a lot of the costs that you've seen going up is the maintenance and support costs for new software applications that have been brought online. So, that's...
All right. One of the expense issues that we addressed in the Links was that you're going to have to pay an additional licensing fee for your Oracle software, which you just got an invoice on it like two or three days ago, and the impact of that on your budget. Could you touch on that, please?
Sure. In 2005, the Oracle license contract that was done had, initially was a five-year contract, and it was licensed based on the number of employees and the total number of revenue reported in the CAFER. So, that included all transfers, general fund, enterprise funds, everything included. The limit on that was $408 million. So, on May 7th, we got a, what we call an ordering document bill from Oracle stating that we had exceeded that. And our new licensing cost to come in compliance with the existing contract would have to go up by $203,000. And the support cost for the next year would be about $44,752 approximately for, for one year support cost. That's 22% of it. So, those are the figures that you're looking at that weren't in the budget, and May 7th, we got this information, and I had to bring that in as a late addition to the budget. There are a couple of options there, and I think, you know, you've kind of talked about them, and we can look at, look at that if you want to.
Okay. Well, I think what the Link Committee recommended was taking approximately $200,000 that had been allocated to purchase the software for real estate and moving it into the bonding area. And that would be a capital expenditure and take it out of your operating budget. And then, to replace, take that $200,000 approximately and use it to pay for this additional licensing fee. Is there any reason that would not work for you?
That will work. And my other recommendation was we, we did have the rent money in there for one year, and we were trying to expedite the move out. And if we could use that money to pay the support cost, which is the 22% of that, that would essentially take care of this late addition. So, I'm open to suggestions if you want to discuss.
All right. Well, I think that the rent for your office that's being relocated, and you'll be moving out of that space, was about $25,000 savings, and that was moved over to the, the Citizens Advocate Office. So, that's where that, that money currently is recommended to move. Does anybody have a question for technology? All right. Thank you. I think we're getting close to the end here. Do you want to put up the next sheet, Scott? Okay. Okay. This, we accepted the mayor's budget for that, and the only item that was in question was there are some funds that come in from IRBs about what the value of those were and whether they should be, you know, the revenue should go towards this, this particular office for additional economic development efforts. So, that being said, I think that's all we really have to report on that. We're recommending approval of that budget. Commerce Lexington. And here again, we are recommending that budget. That has a reduction from last year. And the position of the Links Committee was that we're doing an economic development study, which is now underway, and it might be appropriate to revise the budget when we have a response from the consultants and upon adoption of that report by the council. Question. Ms. James.
Thank you, Councilmember Lane. I think that we forgot during our Links to have the discussion about the $25,000 for the additional money that the mayor proposed for incubator regarding Commerce Lexington. We did not discuss that in our link. So, I don't know if we want to discuss that during the committee of the hall, but we did, we accepted the, this reduced budget. But when you add that $25,000 for that new program, I think it takes it over what last year's was. So, I just wanted to mention... So I just wanted to mention that we did not specifically discuss the incubator project.
Scott, do we have the numbers on Commerce Lexington? Yeah, okay, let's look at that. I still think there was a reduction. See, I think we were at 522 and we're at 508, so that did reduce the, there was approximately a $50,000 reduction and then a $25,000 for the incubator and I don't know if, do you want somebody to speak to the incubator or are you happy with that?
Is that included in that 508?
Yes, ma'am.
It is. If we can just get that confirmed before we...
Mr. Kelly, can you speak to that?
Doesn't have to be today, but just when we report, when we do our Cal meeting. Thank you so much. And what that, just some details about what that looks like and how they're going to make it happen, that sort of thing.
Okay, can we go, let's try to move forward here quickly. Can we do the Downtown Development Authority and just say that that budget has been reduced this year. We are recommending approval of it and just to note that the DDA has restructured their staffing to have a full-time urban architectural design planner and they're in order, they were able to do that by sharing some administrative costs with DLC and the Parking Authority. Downtown Lexington Corporation. And we have recommended the approval of that. It's approximately $50,000 budget, which was reduced slightly this year. Lexar Arts, that is the operating expenses for the Downtown Arts Center where they manage that property and that's approximately $100,000 per year. The Kentucky World Trade Center, and I would say that the Vice President Rogers and the former Governor Collins came to our meeting in support of their funding. They said it was very important and I think that's about $100,000 a year and that is also funded some through the greater Louisville, Metro Louisville budget over there. And we are recommending approval of that. Lexington Center Corp... Yes, sir. Excuse me, Mr. Peard.
Just a comment on the World Trade Center, which has been mentioned to them on many occasions. Louisville jumped in, wanted to be a player with the World Trade Center. What I find is somewhat disquieting is that Northern Kentucky got the Toyota plant, not the plant, but the general offices for Toyota, which is probably our only real world trade link. They contribute nothing out of the triad to help this. I think there ought to be some effort to bend their arm a little bit and see if they can't jump in. They're getting the benefit and they aren't paying the tab.
All right, on the next item is Lexington Center Corporation and these are strictly pass-through funds, but Bill Owen indicated that the number of events, attendance and revenues at the convention center have substantially increased over the last year or so. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, their funding, we only, we only look at the budgets for these two organizations. They're basically pass-through funds too and, you know, they were very complimentary about the new pavilion and streetscaping and indicated they've been very valuable in recruiting conventions and meetings that are booked into the future. And that's it. And I'm sorry this took so long, but there were a lot of individual things to review here and I wish we could have done it a lot faster. Does anybody have any final questions before we wrap up? And I believe the chair has ruled that any, we're going to put these all, all these suggested changes on a sheet and then we'll vote on them, like I said, at a later date, so there won't be any motions necessary at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember Lane. We, the Councilmember, Councilmember Myers, we've got a few minutes here before, several people have to leave for a 6 o'clock neighborhood meeting. Would you like to introduce and go as far as you can?
I think, Vice Mayor, I think we can get done today.
All right, okay.
We'll give Mr. Schuler a chance to get set up over here.
This is Finance, Social Services and Outside Agencies.
Okay, as we get started here, we're going to go briefly through each page submitted by the administration and with, beginning with Commissioner's Social Services Office. And there's no new positions. The department's currently undertaking a comprehensive review of programs and services, positions and policies. It's going to be implementing a reorg here in the near future and the commissioners promised to keep us in the loop about that, but everything looks to be fine there and so we're going to accept the mayor's proposed budget on the Office of Social Services. Moving to the next one, we have Adult Services. We've got Adult and Tenant Services. And again, there aren't any changes here. I would, I would say this caveat though, we talked about in our link that the managers and the employees in Social Services are some of the lowest paid among our government and we challenged the commissioner and I know she's already working on that. She's going to bring back a proposal to make some changes in that as part of the reorg, so we're looking forward to that. When we look at Adult and Tenant Services, we accept the mayor's proposed budget there as well. Moving along to Division of Family Services, they found several efficiencies in that program. One of the things that, that the commissioner's worked out as a partnership with Fayette County Public Schools in which they're going to provide the food service for both day treatment center and family care center. It is going to call for the elimination of six positions with our government, but Fayette County Public Schools has said that, that they will provide an opportunity for interviews for those six employees and hopefully they can be picked up and just kind of transferred over there and not miss a beat. So we accept that mayor's proposed budget on that one as well. If we go to Division of Youth Services, we found out late in the process that there was a bus that was going to be purchased for Social Services and it turns out through further conversations that that's going to be purchased through, I believe it's going to be Fleet Services. And so that opened up an additional $145,000 in, in the budget here for Social Services and we received from the commissioner an ask on how to spend that $145,000 that actually equals $147.9. And we haven't had a chance as a link yet to meet on what recommendation, if any, we want to make on that and so that will take place on Thursday, so we'll have an addendum to this report out at that point in time. Other than that, we have approved the mayor's proposed budget, the caveat that there's $145,000 that we need to look at. If you want to look at your budget, page 163, it shows that $145,000 in line item 71299 under Professional Services. Moving along to Department of Finance and Administration, the commissioner's office. Professional Services are increasing by $14,000 to $84,000 to fund the general fund portion of the various financial and property tax audits, which is a good thing. That can be found on page 72, line item 71202. There's no new positions or eliminations proposed and we accept the mayor's proposed budget on that one. Division of Accounting, they actually have a reduction of $11,000 in their training and conference budget. They've limited that to what they need for certifications that are required and we accept that mayor's proposed budget. Central Purchasing, they're continuing to work on the Print Device Management Project. It's been completed in conjunction with the Division of Computer Services and has reduced operating costs associated with printing and everything looked good there. We approve or accept the mayor's proposed budget. Community Development, there's an analysis of workflow and structural efficiencies as a result of implementation of the PCG module and that will continue through 2011. There's also an increase in their budget with respect to training costs of $20,000. We looked at that, had a lot of discussion about sort of the decentralization or centralization of the overseeing of grants and this money's in there to ensure that everybody in community development is up to speed with all the training that they can have to make sure that we utilize every aspect of grants that are out there for us to take advantage of. So they're going to be looking at every opportunity out there and we think that's a good thing. So we accept the mayor's proposed budget there as well. If you get to Division of Human Resources, if I could have the commissioner come up. There's a couple of things here that we wanted to talk about. There, when you look at the YMCA, we'll start with that first. The mayor's proposed budget, and I'll let you speak to that if I get this incorrectly, it was intended the mayor to have that removed from the budget, but there was a mistake made in the budgeting process when the book was printed and it was actually included. So to my delight, the budget is balanced with that already in place. And the link has, has made the recommendation that we stay with it as the budget book was printed rather than the intentions of the mayor. And we're probably going to be looking to, there is one concern however, I'll give you that caveat, that there's, there was a concern that this program may expand to the point that we have to revisit it because it may go outside of its borders of what we have in the budget. And if that happens, we're probably going to be looking to this committee that has been looking very fervently at our wellness program and how to make it more robust, to come back with maybe a recommendation that might tie usage to this benefit so that if, if folks are taking advantage of the membership but not of the facilities, then, then there may be some consequences of that and they may lose it or have it decreased or something like that. We don't know what that's going to look like yet, but we do want to put that caveat in there so that we don't have a runaway train and that we do fully utilize the opportunity here, that we are going to be looking to tie that to something. And if you want to, if you want to speak to that, if I've done a good job, that's...
I think you've done a great job and I, and I think what we were trying to put forward once we had the conversation about leaving the YMCA membership in is that we want to make sure that we're being good fiscal stewards and that the dollars that we put in cover memberships, but we also wanted to tie it to this very aggressive wellness program that I think everyone has been talking about and that we'd like to move forward on. And so whether it's through usage of the membership or whether it's through certain aspects of wellness that you get the membership, that putting some kind of parameters around having the membership made sense for us to be able to live within the budget that we have for next year because it has expanded and Leslie, I don't know if you can talk to that number, but, but it has expanded substantially this last year.
And if I could add to that, that that will also help us in case the program does run away, if we've got those stats that show increase in wellness, decrease in medical costs, all those kinds of things.
Right.
Then that will help substantiate increase in the program. So that'll be a win-win. Now, if there's any questions, Ms. Gordon, I think has a question on this particular topic.
Just a couple of questions. Is it funded at the same level as last year, YMCA?
Yeah, it's higher because we actually had more participants than we had in the budget last year. So we're dealing with covering those costs right now between now and the end of the year.
Okay.
So we put it at a projected level, but if our wellness program picks up the way we hope it will, we're concerned about balancing those expenses.
Okay. And are you going to sometime make a presentation to council about this aggressive wellness program that was mentioned?
Well, I think that's probably a question for Councilmember Myers. I think that there are members of the council that are actually working on, in conjunction, obviously with HR, working on how we, I think we've used the term jump off the cliff and really embrace wellness and, and our first start, Councilmember Gordon, is actually through the RFP process that we're going through right now on our medical insurance to see what these providers could bring forward to help us take that first step. So the answer would be yes and I think it will be in conjunction with the council.
So it's, the RFP is where it's starting?
Yes.
Okay.
That's one aspect of it, obviously. We're trying to bring all these pieces that seem to be piecemeal together under one more robust effort to help all of our employees not only improve wellness, not just for them, but their families, but then also we would get the benefits as the urban county government through reduced healthcare costs, et cetera.
Are you, with this new wellness program, are you getting suggestions from the employees or how are you developing it other than through the RFP process?
I think we're really just at the initial stage right now.
Okay.
So we would certainly be open. There has just been kind of ancillary conversations around it and as we talked about it and the various pieces and of course Leslie Jarvis can talk a little bit more when she talks about HR's organization, by bringing it together and making it a focus, I think that gives us a basis to really go forward and solicit input from employees, from, from council. And so it's just a starting point, but we had so many pieces, we thought, well, we might as well start now.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Chair. I served on this link and one of the, I think the task for us is to identify a mechanism for, for capping the expenditure on this and what I encourage you to do is maybe to come up with a realistic budget and it may be that we might adjust the amount of the contribution per employee in order so that we come out on budget because we have to stay on budget, obviously. And so that, there's a number of mechanisms which we might, you know, you could cap the number so it's a first come, first served. That might be a little unfair, but you could also, you know, you could limit, you know, reduce in a minor way the amount of subsidy per employee so that we could make it go further if we anticipate larger numbers. But I guess I would ask you to maybe come back to us with a proposal with this so that we can, because we have to stay on budget and so that, I think that's our task to do that. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Peard?
Yes, thank you. What does the Y charge for a membership to us?
What is the employee paying or what does the city pay?
What does the city pay? What does, well, both actually.
The employee for a citywide membership for a family is 20 some that they would pay. The Y gives us a reduced cost and someone from budgeting could probably give you those numbers, but the Y gives us a reduced cost, I think it's 30% from what they would charge for a family membership citywide. Then we charge, the employee pays 20 some dollars for that family membership and then the city would pick up the remaining cost of that.
That's 20 per month, is it?
I think, I think Joe Schuler's trying to put that chart up. There we go.
Chair, I think this, this is as of May 2007, so the numbers are a little out of date. Commissioner Donald, whether you have more recent numbers or...
I don't have any with me, no, I'm sorry.
Do we, or have we considered places like Fitness 19 and Urban Active, which you're now doing month to month for nine bucks?
As far as...
I know one of the complaints it seems is that the people, people go to, let's say, the Beaumont Y and there's just no way that you can even get on a exercise machine.
what our restrictions are with soliciting bids for other health club memberships. Do we have the ability to go out and solicit that? Or how did we come about using the Y? I don't have that information.
Okay, well, it might be something to toughen away for the future. Thank you. Thank you, George.
If I could add something to that discussion, one of the reasons that, there was an agreement that we made with the Y, and part of that came from the fact that we gave them half million dollars for, I think, the North Side Y when they built that one. And so the agreement was that we would give them $100,000 a year for five years towards the new Y that's proposed in Hamburg. And so that's one reason why we didn't just put this out on RFP and ask whoever wants to give discounts to employees, is because we were trying to work in our continued partnership with the Y to get the other Y built. And so it's kind of a two-part process there. And then, obviously, since the economy and things have changed, they've put that Y, the new building, on hold for a time. But that's why we went with the Y on this and not just put it out for RFP.
These other organizations also pay payroll tax and some other things, and we're subsidizing one entity.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lawless?
Yes, I was on this link last year, and if I remember correctly, the reason we were doing it exclusively with the Y is they were the only one that would do payroll deduction. And that was where some of the other gyms wouldn't do it, if that's, if my memory serves me. And I think it's a good program. However, I know an awful lot of people who belong to a gym and never go. And one of the things that I talked about last year when we were looking at this is that my understanding is they have the ability to let us know if our employees and family members are actually using the facility because they have a card swipe. And, you know, I think it's great to pay for it, but, you know, it's not great to pay for it if we're paying it and they just don't go. You know, it's kind of like the treadmill that becomes the clothes rack. Not a lot of health benefits there, so, not that I would have ever had one of those. The other thing I wanted to ask about, so I think it's good, but I think that it's reasonable to kind of get those statistics about, you know, if you're not using it, then it's, you know, they're wasting their money and our money. So the other thing is, who do we have our employee assistance program with?
It's with the Behavioral Medicine Network.
Okay. And increase in drug and alcohol and CDL, what's that? Do we get more?
No, I wasn't clear on that. It's reflecting that the, there is an increase because we moved it from one section of Human Resources to the other. So it appears that we've requested more money in one section of Human Resources than we did last year.
I mean, is that a treatment approach, or?
No, that goes through the testing for those employees, pre-employment testing. And then we have five random pools that our employees go through, random testing. So that pays for the random testing.
Well, last year, they decided to do away with the pre-employment testing on certain groups of employees?
What was done away with last year was pre-employment physicals for certain groups. All employees still have a pre-employment drug screen, they just don't all have a pre-employment physical.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Henson. Okay, thank you. Mr. McCord?
I think to Councilmember Lawless's point, this is the reason why we're putting in this caveat of accountability, that you get this benefit only if you use this benefit. But again, one of the things that we as a council and as a government and the citizens need to understand is, is that the reason healthcare costs go up and the reason why we have a healthcare debate is because people are sicker than they have been. And we have a lot of things that cost us a lot of money. And so if you want your healthcare premiums to go down, which we hear from this mic all the time from the CSEA, then you need to be healthier as a group. And so I think that what we're talking about here is one tiny, tiny aspect of what's coming and what needs to happen. And this is all the way down, this drills all the way down into what is in our vending machines and what's the set price for those things in the vending machines. I mean, it becomes a complete commitment to wellness. And if we do that, we can save the taxpayers a ton of money. And I think the taxpayers expect that the money that they're sending over here for employees to work, that they actually are working. And there's a company that I had a chance to study called Logan Aluminum in Logan County, Kentucky, that their healthcare premiums have gone down every single year because of this commitment since 1993 to wellness. And it can be done. And I think that, I applaud what you're doing, and I look forward to working with you on this, but this is a fractional piece, and it has to go all the way down to, you know, what you said, Councilmember Lawless, that it's not just throw something out there as a carrot, it's, we have to monitor that, and if you're not using it, then it gets taken away. And I think that that will be something that truly saves us money. And I guess the last thing I'll say to this is, we need to learn from the police and fire pension situation. It was ignored for 30 years. We didn't put enough into it. It grew, the deficit kept growing and growing, and finally, this council, this administration, did something about it. Our healthcare premiums deficit is doing the exact same thing. $3 million deficit about three or four years ago, $11 million deficit this year. If we don't understand what that looks like and hit it right now, when we have the opportunity to help people become healthier, then we are going to make the same mistakes that our predecessors do, that we talk all the time about not wanting to do or be like that. So I applaud this effort, but this is just a fractional piece of what we need to be looking at. Thank you, Councilmember Myers, for bringing this to light and moving forward on this much broader thing.
Thank you. And Ms. Crosby?
Thank you, Councilmember Myers. I just wanted to throw out there, I know a few years ago I had presented to Human Resources some research that I had done with other governments across the country where they simply put up signs and sent out emails, like by the steps or by the elevators, they might put up a sign stating, "If you walk up three flights of steps, here's the health benefit." And it's very inexpensive, and people who see those things has been shown that they will look at that, and rather than taking an elevator, they'll take the steps, and it's very, I was surprised at the time because I was told we had no money to do this, but I think it would be something that maybe on a small scale could be instituted. I mean, a flyer and emails, weekly emails with little tips, I think that's also something that we could probably try to encourage this division to do on a much smaller scale, but to start improving our wellness program. I think it would be, we'd see some definite benefits. And they have seen that across the country. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Gordon?
Just one last comment. Councilmember Crosby picked up on something that we've talked about for several years. The dilemma is that we have fairly unsafe steps in this building. And I know that a number of years ago, we had conversation about encouraging people to, you know, go up one, go down two. But a lot of people's feet don't fit on our steps, which sounds funny, but it is true. And so there never has been an effort to do that because of the fear of liability of encouraging people to use our steps. I think the Phoenix Building is maybe a different situation. They have much better steps over there. So I think all the little things like that, like Councilmember Crosby is saying, every little thing like that helps.
Thank you. Okay. We've got 12 minutes. I'm being put under pressure here. If we could go to the, if we could skip, keep you up front here, but if we could skip to Division of Revenue. And we didn't see any issues here, and so we accept the mayor's proposed budget in this office as well. Now, if we can go back to, if there's no questions on that, HR, there was a reorg plan for HR and for Risk Management. Risk Management, we are, we've met with the commissioner, we've gotten some great information. We're going to be meeting with staff on this Thursday at 2:00, I believe, in the conference room, fifth floor conference room, to get some information, which will help us determine our recommendation on that reorg. But if you could explain the reorg for HR briefly?
We have been looking at for the past probably seven or eight months, getting feedback from the senior administration and from other commissioners about the service delivery of Human Resources. We looked at the fact that our customer service skills weren't what they should be, our response to requests for information was slow, that we had mystifying processes in our, not always consistency in our answers. So we were looking for how we could deliver services through Human Resources that one was very transparent so that every employee understood exactly what our policies and procedures are, that flowed quicker and smoother and provided better customer service. In looking at the structure that we have, we proposed putting things into three sections of Human Resources. The first section of Human Resources would be what would be referred to as total compensation. It would cover everything from the payroll, the compensation an employee receives, and the benefits. The second section of Human Resources would be the talent management. One of the things that happens in Human Resources is we have had the pieces of positions placed in various parts of Human Resources. We would focus all of that under one area. So authorized strength for the government is held there. When a division wants to create a position, it's held there in the talent management section. They do the advertising, the posting, the recruiting for those positions, and they get those positions on the docket, so that everything is streamlined and managed when it comes to the creating the position and hiring the position. A third section would be the Risk Management Occupational Wellness, which we'll talk about. We have a Health Services Advisor that we hired a few years ago for the purposes of creating a more healthy government and works in Human Resources, and that seems an appropriate fit for that position. And then the fourth section would be the Employee and Labor Relations, would be training and development as a part of that, and then an Employee and Labor Relations section. And then one section that we created new is the Policy and Organizational Development. Part of where I think the inconsistency comes from in our answers is not, and someone said it earlier, that we deliver several different wrong answers, but it could be one answer or 10 answers could be appropriate, but they're not 10 of the same answers, so therefore it looks like we're providing different answers, different information. So having someone who focuses on the policy and development, who creates a family medical aid policy, workers' comp policy, and so forth, so that there is that consistency that the employees can pick up on their own and read what the policies and procedures are for this government.
That was very succinct and precise. Do we have any questions on that? Okay, then we are done. We will present an addendum after we meet on Thursday with the recommendations on the $145,000 in Social Services and then on the reorg for HR and Risk Management.
Can I add one thing to that?
Sure.
One of the things that has changed in this workflow that I think is very important to keep in mind is PeopleSoft has drastically changed the way we do business. And I want to give you an example of that. Right now is performance evaluation time. One of the things that we have been responsible for is receiving the performance evaluations. Each performance evaluation is approximately six pieces of paper. You times six pieces of paper by 3,000 employees in government, that's a lot of paper that comes into Human Resources that has to be scanned and filed. The way we're changing it this year is it's going to come through a PDF electronically, and it's going to be filed into an electronic personnel folder. So we've eliminated all of that, and that's where some of the proposed changes in our organizational structure is coming from, is the changes in technology are allowing us to do work more efficiently than we have in the past and with less paper.
And I'll just say on that note, and this has nothing to do with this administration because it was previous to them being here, but I know that there's been some issues in the past with applications. I know that my application was checked out by somebody and then not returned. And so this electronic file will allow you to understand who checked it out and when and why. And if it doesn't get back, you've got a record of that as well. So there's a lot of efficiencies here and a lot of things that PeopleSoft brings to the table that are really going to be fantastic for our employees. So I appreciate that as well. Thank you. And?
Councilmember Link?
Oh, Mayor Newberry's up to speak. Go ahead, Mayor.
I just had one quick question. And with the new PeopleSoft system, and that's becoming more integrated into the operations of government, are you seeing the long-term potential for more efficiency and productivity levels for employees?
We definitely feel that that's the case, and if we had more time, we could talk about just from the payroll standpoint, where we've seen so many different efficiencies. But we see, as we add these other, or I guess as our entire employee base begins to use PeopleSoft more robustly, we are actually, we were talking about grants administration. As we embrace what's out there in that grants module, it's going to flow throughout the organization, and I think we'll see opportunities for people to either expand their role in other areas or just efficiencies in general that will pick up.
If I could add something to that, I think one thing to look at when we look at PeopleSoft that a Human Resource colleague of mine said when I was explaining to him that we had transitioned into PeopleSoft, his explanation of that program was, "We had purchased a grand piano, the finest on the market, but right now, we're using it to play chopsticks," meaning the potential what we have with PeopleSoft and what we can do in Human Resources and financials is huge, and we haven't even begun to do what the system is capable of doing for us in improving our efficiencies.
We look forward to that.
That it?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We've had a long and productive day. Is there, oh, Councilmember McCord?
Vice Mayor, this is at the request of Councilmember Stinnard, who had to go to his meeting, but the, looking at the next meeting date, next Tuesday at 9:00, there was a request by him for us to maybe look at 1:00, since people are on vacation and coming back and so forth, if we could maybe move our meeting time back to 1:00 or 2:00, sometime in the afternoon.
No, it would be Tuesday, June 1st.
Yes.
Yeah, the --
We got to cover services.
There's no meetings that day except for this. We scheduled a 9:00 meeting for Cal, and we were looking at, could we make that after lunch? Councilmember, yeah, Councilmember Gordon? Yes, ma'am.
Would there be any, only because I already have a 1:00 and a 2:30, could we go like at 3:00 or something like that? Some people have already scheduled other meetings.
Around that. What about later that morning? 7:12, 1:00, but you've got a 1:00, right?
Isn't the Citizen Advocate meeting at 11:30?
That's June, it's June 8th. June 8th.
There's a Committee of the Whole at 11 on June 8th.
That's right. Citizens Advocate is 9:30, I'm sorry.
So the Citizen Advocate is not on June 1st?
No, it's on June 8th at 9:30.
9:30, okay.
Vice Mayor, are you leaning towards 11:00? Is that what the discussion is? 11?
Is that okay?
For two hours? Vice Mayor, is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
11? How about I make a motion?
Well, this is the, yeah, hold on just a second. This is, is Jerry here? Is this that meeting that sometimes it's unpredictable?
Yes.
Well, we'd better be careful about a two-hour limit then, hadn't we? I think we, I feel better we ought to, I feel, I'd feel better sticking with where we are if we've got it on the calendar right now. I mean, I agreed with what Kevin was saying, but, you know, it's, I agreed earlier with the idea because I didn't like that coming back necessarily either, but, well, all right, 10. Let's go 10. Yep. Say good. Okay.
I'm speaking, yes. Kevin Stinnard's proxy today. I'm fine with whatever.
Okay, let's do 10 then. All right. Well, just a 10. All right. So is there anything more? 10:00, 10:00, June 1st.
Vice Mayor, if I could ask, I don't mean to be out of order, but if I could ask a question just to verify, we have a 2:00 Links Committee meeting on Thursday for finance, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then we'll have our other, our Committee of the Whole on Tuesday, is that correct?
That's correct.
I just want to make sure we have the proper staff.
10:00.
Thank you.
On Tuesday instead of 9:00. All right. Is there anything more to come before the Committee of the Whole here? If there is not, is there most to adjourn? If there's a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. We are adjourned.